The regular notice requirement of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act has been complied with and that adequate advance notice of this meeting was given at least forty-eight hours in advance. On May 23rd, 2017, notice was mailed to the Courier, Post, and the Philadelphia Inquirer.
Ms. Teresa Atwood, Ms. Catherine Blackshear, Mr. Jose Brito Bueno, Ms. Dorothy Burley, Ms. Taysha Minear, Mr. Wassim Muhammad, Mrs. Felicia Reyes Morton, Mrs. Martha Wilson.
Present. Would you all please stand with me to pledge allegiance to the flag. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I turn it over to our school business administrator.
So, in a moment, I'm gonna give the regular presentation. There's no closed session today, so we're gonna jump right in. Before we come down, I want to introduce our new school business administrator, Ms. Anissa Coppin. Ms. Coppin started with us a little over a month ago, and this is her first board meeting in the capacity of school business administrator, and we're just thrilled to have her. She came by way of numerous well-established South Jersey organizations, so Virtua Hospital, Prudential, the DRPA, so she has experience in both private sector, public sector, and we're just really, really excited to have her on the team and grateful to have you here tonight this evening. Let's give her a round of applause and welcome her.
Thank you.
All right, we will jump down now. So, we want to begin by discussing Puerto Rico, given the horrific tragedy there with the hurricane and the fact that thousands, upon thousands of Camden residents have family in Puerto Rico and are constantly on the phone trying to figure out how their loved ones are doing. I know a lot of people in our central office have come up to me over the last few days and just told me that they still haven't been able to get a hold of some of their relatives. And so, I just want to send our thoughts and prayers and also to make very clear that we are going to have a coordinated effort to be able to support families here and certainly, to the extent possible, in Puerto Rico through various recovery efforts. There are a few that are noted here on the slide. Right now, we are also coordinating with city, county officials, city and county officials who are coordinating with state officials so that there's one kind of direct organizing effort. There's a meeting that happened with some of our city council members and freeholders earlier this afternoon. I've not yet gotten the update from that meeting, but that meeting was really designed to then spell out what the path forward is, what the fundraising mechanism will be, and as soon as we have that additional information, we're gonna email it out to the rest of the district. So be on the lookout for that. In the meantime, these are the organizations that we would encourage you to support. They're again noted here, United for Puerto Rico, UNICEF, and so forth. So, please do ask any questions you may have after the meeting or reach out to anyone or our staff and, again, just to keep those who are impacted in your thoughts and prayers. We've got back-to-school night coming up, so Wednesday and Thursday of this week, so the elementary and family schools are on Wednesday, and then Thursday are the high schools. There's gonna be early dismissal for those schools and the family nights will ensue. So, please bake your way to those events, and I'm planning on stopping by myself and hope to see you there. Rashawn Hornsby was going to give a few updates on the Camden High reconstruction process. I don't think he's here yet, and so I'm just gonna give those updates. If he shows up later and it makes sense for him to jump in, we can do that. Otherwise, I just want to let you all know. In terms of some of the moving parts, I think we've discussed some of this before, and when we say moving parts, I mean, there are a million different extracurricular activities, various space needs that come up over the course of a school year, and this is, here are a couple of examples. So, earlier this fall and late summer, the football team made very clear that their offseason conditioning, they're doing two-a-days, they need access to the weight room, and the weight room, all the resources and equipment was still in the main building in Camden High. So, our team triaged and worked diligently to figure out a new location because Hatch, frankly, didn't have enough space for the weight room, neither did Big Picture, excuse me, not Big Picture, the Boys and Girls Club where Big Picture is. And so, we ultimately found a space at the TV studio at 1600 Pine Street. There's a very large room, I'm sure many of you are familiar with it, which we redesigned as the weight room, and it's functional, as with everything else with the move. It's not perfect, we have a lot of work to do. We always knew that during this transition, things wouldn't always be perfect, and we are just always gonna problem-solve and try and do the very, very best we can for our kids and for our staff and for our families. And so, the weight room is now situated there. I think basketball, we've discussed, but just as a reminder, there are very, very few gyms, actually, there are literally zero gyms within our district that can house the typical audience you get for a boys' basketball game. Now, for our other sports, indoor and outdoor, we still have appropriate facilities. So, for freshmen, junior varsity, boys and girls, sports generally speaking, we have been able to situate the Camden High students at Hatch, Creative Arts, HB Wilson. For the actual boys' basketball games themselves, there are very, very few facilities in the city, and again, zero within the district. Rutgers is where we landed for a number of our home games, and so we were able to work with their administration, and they are gonna host seven home games for the boys' basketball team. The remainder of the games are basically gonna be played at a variety of places throughout the county, and really, they're just gonna be functional away games, even though technically they're home games. And so, we'll release that schedule for those who are interested. Middle school sports, I want to just address what was, last week, I think, a lot of confusion around middle school sports that, for whatever reason, the information being that we weren't holding middle school sports this year, which is anything but the truth. So, we are moving forward with middle school sports this year like we always have in the past. Huge thanks goes out to Greg Kasperowicz, who's gonna be leading the middle school sports process again this year, and so, he'll take the lead coordinating those efforts, just like he has in previous years, and it's gonna continue to go off without a hitch. Park results, so I mentioned to you all last board meeting that we will have our formal park results for this board meeting, and I will keep it relatively brief. The information will be posted on our website, there's a video that will be posted on our website, but really, really thrilled to be able to share with you all that we are seeing meaningful progress. And as you can see here, these are our district schools' results. So, our traditional public schools have, in literacy, which is on the left, over the last three years, well, if you go back to 2014, 15, we've almost doubled our proficiency rate. And when you look at math, we have also grown meaningfully. We've basically doubled there as well. And we still certainly have a long ways to go, and in a moment, I'll show you all some of the state averages which would reflect that, but we are moving in the right direction. And that is a testament to the efforts of our educators, our school leaders, and countless others inside of our schools and certainly our central office as well. As I've mentioned before, test scores don't tell you everything there is to know about a school. There's so much more that goes into making a world-class school than just the test itself and how kids do on that test. At the same time, our kids' ability to be able to master math and reading and writing at grade level is a very critical skill they need to be successful in life beyond high school. And so, we still do certainly put a great deal of importance in these results. I know it's a little bit hard to see these school-by-school results, I'm just gonna share with you all a few highlights. So, here are our literacy results for grades three through eight, and a couple of schools are highlighted here. I want to start by giving a shout-out to Sharp, which had the overall highest literacy proficiency rates in the district. We also saw, I think Ms. Ruiz is here, let's give her a round of applause for her accomplishments. I just caught her in the back of my eye, so. Kramer School saw really, really impressive growth, that's Kramer right there, they jumped about five points over last year. And then Forest Hill, more than tripled their proficiency rate. Let's give Forest Hill, that's Forest Hill right there. So, two consecutive years of really impressive growth at Forest Hill, and hats off to their staff. And, oh, we only have literacy, I apologize, I thought we had math as well. With math, I'll go ahead and tell you that Kramer jumped fourteen points year-over-year in math, which is incredible. With our high schools, look, we still have some work to do. With our high schools, our results were for the most part flat to slightly down. With our high schools, we still have more work to do. There are a lot of indicators that would tell you things are improving in terms of culture and climate, suspension rates being reduced, but we still have more work to do in terms of the academic rigor inside of our high schools, and we're gonna keep our heads low and keep at it and then put in the hard work to be able to better support our educators to then support our students. Here are the math results, so apologies, it's a little bit out of order. I mentioned that Kramer had the really big jump, so there's Kramer there with a really, really impressive growth, and again, Forest Hill more than tripling again their results in math, just like they did in literacy. When you look at across Renaissance schools and traditional public schools, there's even more pronounced growth, more impressive growth altogether. As a system of schools representing roughly ten thousand students, you see that we have almost tripled the proficiency rate in literacy and more than doubled the proficiency rate in, I'm sorry, on the left is math and on the right is literacy. And so, that growth is really, really impressive, as I highlighted earlier, when you compare it to the state results, it certainly puts things in perspective. So, we certainly still have a great deal of work to do, we've always known that. It's the progress that we want to highlight, and the progress that we've seen is outpacing the progress in other parts of the state. So what that means is that we are slowly but steadily closing that gap with our peer districts across the state, and that is really a team effort across both school types. Mr. Barfield.
So Superintendent, can you go back to the high schools? Because I see when you just did the slide, you're not identifying between which one is Renaissance, which one is Charter.
These are all traditional public schools, so the only slide I showed...
The other slide before the school, or after the school?
I only showed one slide with Renaissance schools. Everything you've seen are traditional public schools. And if anyone wants to go through the entire, like, there's a lot of data, and would be happy to sit down, kind of roundtable conversation, and go through all of it together. We just wanted to highlight the traditional public schools, and so these are the, just our traditional public school results.
I understand that too, but even when you're talking about the family schools, the data's not differentiating the, between, I guess for me as a parent, I'm concerned or want to know, what is the rate of proficiency from our five to eighth graders compared to, is the earlier grades actually making those numbers higher? And then even as far as our high schools, where are we at in the improvement of our parks for our high schools, traditional high schools, which I'm not seeing that information?
It's a really, really great question. You can break it down by grade level, you can cut the data a lot of different ways. I'd love to be able to sit down and have that conversation with you. We wanted to really show the headline results and the school-by-school results, but that's really on the money to be able to really break down lower elementary, upper elementary, middle school, and would love to, we have all of that data, and would love to sit down and have that conversation with you. So let's please do schedule a time to be able to do that. Let me, I'm gonna take these last two questions and we're gonna move on. Ms. Fida.
Superintendent, we no longer want you to have roundtables and conversations with individuals, we want, the community wants to know. The community wants to know.
We'll make it an open meeting.
Roundtables and these conversations alienate the people from the truth. Everybody needs to know how our high school performance are. Not one person, not Mr. Barfield, not one click over there, one click over there, every click in here needs to know.
We'll make it an open meeting.
We are a community.
We'll make it an open meeting.
We are a community.
Ms. Trent.
And we are concerned about our public education, and there's so much going on now that we gotta address it here today.
Ms. Trent.
Yes, I'm curious because it says zero point zero percent for big picture learning. My son scored the highest in the math across district and cross-country run, so why is his dad on there?
That was in middle school, right? That was in middle school your son did, right?
It was a child learning.
Yeah, right, but that was Big Picture's high school results. Your son did it in middle school, that's why. They were six of twelve. I agree with you, Ms. Fida, anyone is welcome to that meeting, it is not a closed-door meeting. All right. Donors Choose, so, I'm not sure if some of you all caught this announcement, we put it on our website, it was a wonderful conversation we had with some Woodrow Wilson students. We, thanks to the generosity of a local couple who live in Voorhees, who founded Townsend Press, so John Langan and Judy Nadel, there is a $130,000 matching program available for Donors Choose, and again, just generosity of local philanthropists to be able to open up on Donors Choose, the ability for any teacher in Camden to be able to write up a grant and get really important classroom resources funded. And so, Donors Choose, if you haven't heard of it, it's just an amazing website. When I was a classroom teacher, I literally wrote dozens of Donors Choose grants, I got a classroom library, I got like a couch for my classroom, and we were in Mr. Levy's classroom at Woodrow Wilson, and he literally has a 3D printer that he got funded through Donors Choose, and all these other amazing resources, and we really encourage all teachers to be able to utilize this resource. All right. I mentioned also last week, for those, last month, for those of you that were here, is we're gonna give an update, because this question came up from a number of individuals who spoke during public comment. We want to give you an update on where we are with all of our vacant buildings. And so, there were a lot of questions and concerns around, what are you doing with your vacant buildings? And I promised you all we're gonna be as transparent as possible about each of those vacant facilities. And so, I'll just go from top to bottom. The Broadway School, and by the way, the vast majority, in fact, all but one of these facilities were vacant slash unused before 2013, before my appointment, before this administration's. I just wanted to call that out, and something that the district kind of has been dealing with for a long time. Actually, all but two, Rigs was also in use at the time. So Broadway School is currently being appraised because there have been a number of different parties at this point who have expressed interest in buying the Broadway School. So, with Broadway School, it's really kind of a wide variety of interested parties, and so, we're in the process of praising the building, we'll keep you all posted to see where we land there. It is likely veering toward an RFP, so we, if it goes in any different direction or any direction, period, as things move forward, we will keep you posted. Challenge Square, we are in discussion with a local nonprofit to repurpose it into an urban garden. So there really hasn't been any interest in Challenge Square in terms of having an idea, having kind of the resources and funding necessary to be able to revitalize the building until this. And this is a local nonprofit who came to us and expressed interest in turning it into an urban garden. With the old Dudley Building, there's currently no interest expressed there, same goes with Fetters and the old Caddo. Environmental Center, so the county has expressed interest alongside the township in which the environmental center resides, to purchase the building and make it available for educational use really throughout South Jersey. So I just want to let you all know that. We, I'm not sure if we've appraised it yet, but I do know that, again, there is interest from those two parties. Parkside School, Parkside School, I can't remember when that school closed, I want to say 2008, '09, somewhere around there. And so, Parkside School, being in a very kind of densely residential area, there has been some interest in it, more recently, a local nonprofit has expressed interest in renovating and repurposing it into a community center, so the idea would be a community center. The Rigs Center, it's not really vacant, our information technology team is currently utilizing the Rigs Center, so most of the space, however, is not being utilized, and so we are still open to potentially selling it and repurposing it, and there has been interest from a real estate developer in the last three, four weeks to convert it into a housing development. And as far as we understand, it's mixed use, so potential affordable housing, Section Eight, but also market rate as well. And clearly, if we were to move in that direction, we would do so in partnership with our city officials, so I just want to let you all know that there has been interest to redevelop the land where the Rigs Center currently resides. South Camden Alternative, there's no interest there. The Sumner School, we discussed this last month at the board meeting, that there has been interest there. The Liberty Park Neighborhood Association has asked to weigh in on that process, and that Kip School alongside a local daycare have also expressed interest in Sumner, Kip, or Sumner is in Kip's catchment area, and the daycare is a local daycare in that Centerville community. And so, both of those organizations have expressed interest in the Sumner School. And then lastly, Old HB, there's no interest there. Yes? Yeah, so the, for Sumner specifically, the daycare that I'm referring to is the First Nazarene daycare, and Dr. Dawson himself reached out to us, and so we are gonna be working with him to see if we can be supportive to provide their daycare some space. All right. Last thing before we get into the district highlights, the school information cards, excuse me, we've been asking for some feedback, we held a series of kind of focus groups with families and school leaders and educators, and so in total, we had thirty-two parents and guardians participate in the family focus groups, representing really a variety of grade levels, and families were asked to rank their top five most important priorities when choosing a school to give us this feedback, and then same thing with the school leaders. And so, we're still compiling the feedback that we received, but just a few notes to share in terms of trends. And I don't think any of this will surprise those here. Families prioritize safety and academic and program factors. Families value information about what happens inside of the classroom, so is there one-on-one help, what's the curriculum, are there hands-on activities, is the school responsive? And then school information cards capture some of this information, but the format is overwhelming, and a lot of families told us that there's just so much there, and if there's a way to simplify it, to make it a little bit more accessible. So those are really the headline trends that we heard, and we're going to potentially make some revisions to the school information card based on some of the feedback that we heard. Last thing with district highlights, our respective comprehensive high school football teams won their opening games and are off to a good start this year, and so just want to give a shout-out to Coach Savage and Coach Brown and certainly all the players. Our first day of school, we had an attendance pledge, and the pledge was for students and parents to commit to perfect attendance right there and then on the first day of school, and we had over four hundred students and their parents pledged to do that on the first day of school. Our attendance team is here to support families who are struggling to get their students to school on time every day, and so shout-out also to the family and operations coordinators and others inside of the school who are there supporting our kids. Some of you all may have seen the governor came and visited last week at the Whittier School, which was a nice event, and it was just really nice to see the renovations at the Whittier School and to be able to celebrate some of our progress, which included the slides I just showed you all just now with the recent park results. We also had Dad Take Your Child to School Day, this was last week. I was able to join the Sharp community, and I walked with the Belfords to school, which was a lot of fun, and the Sharp community in particular just really, quite literally, rolled out the red carpet for their dads in support of them and all they do for their children. And I think they had something like a hundred dads there at Sharp that morning, and really throughout the district, the turnout was unbelievable. And then last thing, a big shout-out to CEA, who has been partnering with the Camden City School District, and this was really Lisa Hardwick's initiative, she brought it to us and asked if we could work together to encourage everyone to wear pink on Thursday, October the nineteenth in support of breast cancer awareness. So I just want to give Lisa and Dr. Benson a big shout-out. Thank you all. And we will acknowledge the retirements on stage.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just want to read out our retirees for the month. Thank you, you know, again, to those who have provided service to our families, our youth, in allowing, you know, our district to be the best that it can be. We wish you farewell in your retirement. Kimberly Bartosz, eleven years, Karina Cologne, twenty-six years, Sarita Hicks, twenty-seven years, Sanaa Kair, eight years, Mary Corden, seven years, Bruce Miller, twelve years, Robin Sanders, twenty-five, and Candice Williams, thirteen. Again, thank you.
We will now turn the meeting over to our business administrator.
The business office would like to present the following resolutions, number seventy-eight through to one oh-two, the bill list, and the July financial report for approval.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? Okay. In accordance with the powers vested in the state district superintendent, under Title eighteen A, I hereby approve today Superintendent's agenda items and Business Office's agenda items.
So now we're, now we're gonna begin public comment. The Camden City School District welcomes the attendance and comments from all members of the public at its meetings. This public comment time is your time to be heard on the agenda items at this meeting. Each person who signed up will have three minutes, you will be notified when your three minutes are up. You cannot yield your time to another person. When is your turn to speak? Please remain at the podium and address all your comments to the board president or the superintendent. Please conduct yourself in a respectful and courteous manner. For anyone whose comments or actions either harass, intimidate, or threaten the safety of another person, we will provide you with a warning or immediately in your comment time. We will not interrupt you during your three minutes of comments. Members of the audience should also not interrupt the speaker at the podium. If you have any questions, please ask your questions during the three-minute comment period, and after public comment is closed, the superintendent may address your items. First speaker is Jalissa Castillo.
Hi, thank you Superintendent, can you hear me? Thank you Superintendent and Board for giving me the chance to speak. I'm a mother of five kids, and I'd like to tell you about my experience with Kip. My son and daughter used to attend the Kip building before the school was closed down, and they attend the Kip now. There is many difference between the building, the way it is now and from before. Now it's more welcoming, it actually feels like a school rather than a closed-down prison. My kids are actually happy to attend the school. As education-wise, it's way more different. My daughter was reading at a first-grade level when she was actually in third grade. The struggles, oh, sorry. My son was also being bullied and didn't want to attend school. It was difficult for, as a mother, to see both my kids struggle between reading and being bullied. With Kip, when they opened up the fourth grade and the fourth and fifth grade, the principal came to the house and promised me that those things were gonna change. My daughter is actually reading now, she's actually above grade level of reading, my son is no longer being bullied. It's a peace of mind for me as a mother to be able to send my kids to school and not have to worry about whether they're getting the proper education or if something were to happen to them because of another student. I honestly think that you guys should give Kip a chance in order to open up another school and be able to provide services to a different area and to be able to have kids extend their education. Thank you.
Nacheeta Dominicias.
Thank you Superintendent and Board members for giving me a chance to speak. Kanye is my grandson. I got him when he was two weeks old, and I had him since. I've always been concerned about his learning because both parents have learned disabilities. I have Kanye and Kip, and he's progressing well, and he's reading normally good, and he get pulled out for reading and he get one-on-one reading. Kanye's mother is my, is Kanye, Kanye is my grandson and his mother is my daughter. She has a learned disability. She has a learned disability and she doesn't read very well. But I don't want Kanye to be a statistic. I want him to achieve and I want him to be better than both parents plus myself. I want more for kids in the neighborhood to have the same opportunities as my child. So I hope you will continue to support Kip and other schools in their educations and supporting the schools, kids' schools. Thank you.
Good evening. And I'm here to talk about the demolition of Camden High and the destruction of the legacy of Camden High. It appears that a number of memorabilia have been thrown away. Others have been distributed to people unknown. And this is part of the legacy of Camden High. Now, when Camden High was first constructed, the population was predominantly white. Had successful sports teams. They won a lot of championships. Transitioned, became predominantly black. They still maintain that tradition of being winners. And there was a lot of memorabilia associated with that. And to date, I'm going to ask you, is there an inventory of what we had in terms of our Is there an inventory? That's a question.
We respond to the questions at the end. The short answer there is that the team did work to gather an inventory, but we will I'll respond to all questions at the end of public commentary.
Okay. And then I would like to have a copy of the inventory when that's if in fact that has been done. The other thing is, you know, and you know, I realize that we need modern facilities, but I opposed from the beginning the demolition of the the main building in Camden High. I think that facade is historic and it should remain. But we're past that apparently. But then we go to Whittier School.
We ain't past that.
Whittier School, Whittier School is a historically black school. If you had been, if you knew anything about Camden and you knew the existence of the old Seventh Ward, which was Canesville and those areas, that's where blacks went because the schools were segregated in Camden. And my father, he went to Whittier School. Whittier School's old school, old school. And I drove past and I see Kip Cooper Norcross on the school. Now, but here's my point. If Camden High has to be taken down because it's in such poor shape, Whittier School is almost as old, if not as old, as Camden High. And it's being renovated. It's not being taken down. So some kind, some game is being played with the people here. And let me say this, the whole concept of universal free public education is a product of the Freedmen's Bureau at the end of the Civil War. Black people were at the forefront of the concept of universal free public education. And I want to know, Mr. Superintendent, why they send individuals, and you're an accomplished individual, like you, to predominantly black communities to destroy the public schools? Because you've done, you've been able to do that. I think it's an affront to the community. And I think that, you know, and you know, to our school board, you're not elected, but you're the school board appointed. But I think that you should look at it as an affront too. I don't understand how you can sit and let these things happen. I don't usually come here, as you know, I've offered my assistance to you, Mr. Rehannaford, and you never call me, so I guess you're in good shape. But I'm offended. I can't believe that you're letting this happen right in front of your noses and in fact endorsing it and supporting it. Shame on you. And at some point, we will, the community will have justice served and people who are responsible for the injustices will be brought to task. That concludes my statement.
Sierra Lander. Sierra Lander.
Hello, thank you for having me. I am actually Kip staff, but I'm here to read on behalf of one of our parents who wasn't able to make it tonight. So her name is Nisha. And she says, I'm so sorry I'm not able to be there today. My family is going through a very hard time with my grandmother, whose doctors only gave her less than a week to live. I wanted my testimony to be heard because I would like everyone to know how Kip has helped both my both my kids. My name is Nisha and I'm a proud Kip parent. My son Juan Lopez is in the third grade and attends Kip Landing Square. And my daughter is in the fifth, Delia is in the fifth grade and attends Kip Whittier Middle. My son started Kip when it was just the trailers. When I first heard about Kip, I was skeptical. At the time, my son was diagnosed with separation anxiety, ADHD, seizures, and a bipolar disorder. At that time, I had my hands full and was trying to figure out if any schools in Camden were the right fit for my son. But once I got a knock on my door, everything changed. Miss D and Miss Catawkey sat down on my sofa and I knew that I had found the right school for my son. They went above and beyond to make sure my son was comfortable. They had his teachers come out and meet him. They also had him come to the trailers to see it before school started. When when school started, he would cry because he had to leave school at 4:30 PM. I love Kip. With this school has made my kids love school. At one point, my first-grade son would help my third-grade daughter with her math. My daughter used to be so upset because she wanted to go to Kip with her little brother because his school made learning fun and my son and, sorry. And last year, it finally happened. She finally got accepted to attend Kip for the fourth grade and now she loves going to the school as well. She loves the teachers and all the staff. I want every child in Camden to have the opportunity to have a great school to go to. And to me, that is Kip. I love this school and so do my kids, nieces, and nephews.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a parent with PGCS. My son goes to Wilson High School. That's the first. And I was skeptical because I wanted him to go to Penn Tech. But I want to say thank you because the principal they have is amazing and is awesome. My son is excited to go to that school as well. Second thing, I, we partnered with Kramer Alfred, Alfred Kramer. And as you highlighted, the Bring Your Father to School Day is awesome. To witness fathers, more than 20 parents come out to the school was amazing for me. And I really thank you for that. And I thank you for choosing a better principal for Wilson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Judith Mota. I'm here today as a parent advocate leader for Parents for Great Camden Schools and as a proud Mastery parent. Last month, I had the pleasure to participate in Harry C. Sharp's Family School. It was an it was an amazing experience to be able to be a direct part in this paint project, which they painted the inside of the school. So it's color-coded, you go by the office, it's red, Parent Center. It was amazing. I was blessed to be able to be a direct part of this project and to see the support of the parents and how they work together to make their school look beautiful again. Like I said before, I'm also a Mastery parent. Before I hit the Mastery topic, I was also, as part of PGCS, was allowed to participate in the community with, last month, Barbara Natos had a back-to-school event where they gave out book bags and I was blessed to be a part of that, to interact with the community and do face painting and just to offer services in the community. As a Mastery parent, earlier today, I had the pleasure to sit in the park conference hosted at Forest Hills. This conference was to give the 2016-2017 year park results in order to see the growth the students have made in taking the park. I'm pleased to announce that Mastery has made a five-point gain in reading that is 41% proficiency in reading for these Mastery children. Mastery overall has had a four-point gain in math, which is 61% more that the children are proficient in math. I'm truly impressed and honored to be a part of the Mastery family. My children have become more proficient in reading and writing and math. Thank you for your time.
Hello, thank you Superintendent and Board for giving me a chance to speak today. I'm a parent of a student at Kip. I want to share my experience with you. Two years ago, the principal came to my house to talk about Kip. I was a little skeptical at first, so I asked him, what's the difference, what's different about Kip? He said, I'll show you better than I can tell you. Ever since that moment, I knew I made the right decision. You're here from, you'll hear from my daughter, Kamora, after me about her experience at Kip. As a parent, I love how the teachers in the school inform me about my daughter academics and behavior. The teachers are awesome. They are strict and they control the classroom, but they also work with the students who have challenges. I want Kamora to stay at Kip now and for high school. And if there's a Kip college, I want her to go there also. I've seen the renovation at Whittier, at the Whittier Building, and I hope and I hope you'll support Kip as they continue to grow in Camden. Thank you.
Thank you for Superintendent and Board for giving me a chance to speak. My name is Kamora. I've been a student at Kip Whittier for two years. At Kip, I learned so many things that I didn't learn at my old school. My teachers are more strict and they don't let me play, so I learn more. Before I came to Kip, I didn't know what happened. Back in the day, I didn't know how to build a robot and I didn't know conductors and ancillary. Now I do. Before Kip, I never, I never, never was on honor roll, but last year, I made honor roll three times in a row. If you have kids, I think you should send them to Kip so they will get smarter. I also want Kip to to grow so it will, it has another elementary school.
Good evening. My name is Aretha Turlington. I'm a parent advocate for Parents for Great Camden Schools. My daughter attends Camden High as a freshman. And I'm an advocate leader for the community for Kramer Hill and Cooper's Point in AV, where I reside at. I did a few, held a few community meetings in Ableton Village where I talked to parents about parent involvement and safety, kids on their way to school. I also did a back-to-school event where I gave out bags and supplies to over 300 students through Mastery. We partner with Mastery. My goal as a parent advocate is to get more parents involved and to have a safe environment for our kids' education.
Good evening, everybody. As you know, my name is Alicia Rivera. My daughter's name is Taina Rivera. She's in ninth grade. She goes to Mastery High School. Taina has special needs. She has Down Syndrome. Before Mastery, my daughter had attended eight different schools. She was bullied. She had little confidence. She couldn't read. She didn't have no friends. As a mom, I was desperate to find a school that would support and understand her. Thank God, I found it. Three years ago, Taina entered Mastery Schools of Camden. Today, my daughter could read. Her permanencehip is beautiful. She enjoys going to school because of her teachers. She says, mommy, I have a teacher, I have friends. Mastery teachers are the best. I mean, don't get me wrong, we have other teachers too. But as, you know, a mother, I'm speaking as that. They really took lookout for my daughter. They're like a family, you know? Mastery has opened doors for my daughter. We are excited that she will be attending an eight-week program at the University of Penn to learn life skills, help her become independent, you know? I could not be happier. I couldn't be happier. Mastery has just opened doors for my daughter last spring. Ten, ten of our students, they traveled to Ghana, Africa. They had a ball. That was a beautiful trip. The after-school program in East Camden, it's amazing. They have basketball, soccer, photography, chess, cheerleading, dancing, 5K, 10K, and much more. Best of all, our kids, our kids are succeeding in a, in school. Just last year, 73% more of our students score proficiency in math on the park and 50 on the reading. So that's good, you know? For me, that's good. Every, every school isn't perfect. It fits every child the way, that way. It is so important that we have a choice. I thank you guys for giving me and my daughter a choice. I want to thank the Superintendent, the members, and the city leaders for our leadership to make sure that all the families in Camden had a free to pick their schools, a freedom of to pick their school. And another thing, I am a parent for Great Camden Schools. And this summer, we, myself and another parent, we did a back-to-school event and we gave out 300 book bags. And a lot of people donated stuff and we are proud and we're going to continue to do that as well. So thank you for everything.
Good evening. Most of you on the board know me, so you know if I come to speak to you, it's something important that is close to my heart. A couple months ago during the summer, I received an email from Ms. Michelle Banks Spearman. And the email that she sent me was in reference to the Camden High And the email that she sent me was in reference to the Camden High Marching Band. It disturbed me a bit because in her email, she did not say anything about this was also brought to the board. When I received the email, I asked her, did the Board of Education know about this and if there was funds set aside for the band? She said she did not know. And so I answered this question because I know that it's also going to be asked by others, other alumnis all over the city, I mean, all over the states. So if you allow me for a second to read this to you, I will also leave a copy so you as well. And it reads, "Dear business owners, community members, the Camden High Marching Band, our South Jersey premier high-stepping marching band. They are known throughout the region for playing great music while executing exciting dance moves. They receive numerous invitations to particular, to participate in parades from New York City to Washington. Their dazzling shows are the results of dedication. The students practice three to four hours every day after school to perfect their performance. The seventy-member marching band is made up of students from Camden High Creative Art, Morgan Arts, Morgan Village Academy, Big Picture Learning School, Brim Medical Arts, and High School Leap Academy, Bonzo Family School, Cream Family School, and more. Band life teaches, teaches the students to work hard, excel, and work as a team. Studies show that the band students generally have a higher GPA and a higher graduation rate than a non-music student. This applies to Camden High's band as well. The band can boast of a ninety-nine percent graduation rate and college attendance rate with many of our students receiving scholarships for band. The Marching Band Booster Incorporated is, Booster is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization of parents, alumni, and friends of the band who support the marching band. We believe in the power of music. This season, we are working to raise funds to help purchase a new and newer musical instruments and supplies, particularly sousaphone, which I'm hoping that's pronounced correctly, which costs between two thousand eight hundred and five thousand dollars each. The drums, the drum heads, the cymbals for the band. Believe it or not, the school district has no budget for the band. These students are so talented. Last year, the dancers came in first place at the High Stepping National Championship in Atlanta, Georgia, and the drum major came in third place. In order to remain competitive, the band needs instrument that work." I guess that's my alarm. And simple, what I'm asking, and I'm asking the board, is to look into this. Maybe it's something that you can do to help them out. We need art as well as sports and everything else. And when I received this, I was very hurt on this. I've had different people, alumnis, contacting me and telling me they have seen Camden High come to their state to participate in certain bands and whatever, and sometimes their uniform was not up to par. And if she's saying that the equipment is not up to par as well, we need to do something because it's not right to have our band go somewhere and not represent us. Thank you.
Ms. Viter Neal.
Hello Advisory Board members, Board President, Superintendent. My concerns is that of Ms. Caris. You know, this is something in the school, the memorabilia has been stolen. Unlike, unlike Keith Walker, I'm going to call names. Because one of them is your employee and I want to tell you. Your FOC for Camden High School time capsules from right here, nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-one. Mike Rozier was given a helmet, even though he went to Woodrow Wilson, he was given a Camden High helmet. And Arthur Marklin, our state secretary there, he has the Camden High helmet. We want our memorabilia back. First of all, the administration wouldn't even have this property had they touched it. The memorabilia belongs to the Alumni Association. We were never asked, which I'm going to number up, to come in and catalog. Now, we got a gentleman, Ms. Wilson, who found two trash cans of part-time of trophies and memorabilia. Let me tell you something, if the stuff was old, it could have been refurbished. I'll tell you what I know. I know there was three football players in one year that went to the NFL and I bet you their helmets ain't there. That's probably the helmets they took. I'm searching eBay and every other website. So what we need you to do Superintendent, is get your team up in that warehouse, catalog all of our stuff, along with the Alumni Association. We will be present. Because the memorabilia is the school's history. You've already taken our school, now you want to take our history? Let me tell you something, Camden High is near and dear to all of our hearts. Maybe it's not to you guys. Now, another thing I want to talk to you about Superintendent is, you told us, A, you was going to get buckets for our kids' gymnasium. That ain't happening. B, you also told us that the SDA was giving you two million dollars for swimming space. You have our children in a five-point, twenty-six school. Half schools had sewer problems for over twenty years. The city won't dig up the land to find out if it's coming from their lateral line. Let me explain to you. The line that goes down the center of the street is called the city lane. That's what the city is responsible for. The line that goes from the front of the building to the back of the building is called the lateral line. And that's what the board is responsible for. So one line is leaking. Right now those kids have a bathroom that's been broke since school started. They don't have a restroom. Is that not a problem? We watched the plumber today go inside of Camden High. I said, "Maybe he hacked one kid's alley." Because we don't know where school is now. He was in the old building. He's supposed to be up there fixing the plumbing over there, a hatch, a big picture. And then he's at Camden High, and they all fall in. It's supposed to be the school of higher learning for our children. And they don't even have a bathroom facility to use? That would be a problem. Getting our memorabilia back would be another problem. And as far as the demolition, we know we put the lawsuit to stop the demolition. Summary judgment is October the second. Either the judge will listen to the case or throw it out. We were our school. All hell is going to break loose if you take that school. I am promising you, on everything I love, I'm going to raise the people Camden High. Now you go for that school, Paymont, you go for that school. I guarantee you, if you go for that school, we are going to beat you.
Ms. Neal, please don't make any threats to the superintendent.
I ain't making threats, I'm making a promise, Ron, with. I'll do it.
Monique Ragsdale.
Good afternoon. I have a few questions. Although, Paymont, you did a great presentation on the, you know, the park exam, but I'm really more concerned about CUSAC. I've been asking you timeless times about CUSACs. I know that you guys violated twenty-nine fundings. It was for special needs, Title I funding, and English language learners. You have not did a presentation on CUSAC since you've been here. I know that it comes up every three years. I've been to the state, I tried to open documents, I can't find anything on it except for the violations you guys had that was over twenty-nine, and most of them were special needs. Which brings to my next concern. In the state of New Jersey, special need is mandated in our traditional public schools. In every school. I don't know what's going on when parents got to go from one side of town to the other side of town to deal with special needs to get services, but that's wrong. We don't, we don't do that in traditional schools, and I think maybe you guys need some assistance. Also, for Title I, there is a parental involvement piece that's very important. That piece, when you guys got rid of the CSCs, the FOC is supposed to be working with the parent or the parent organization with their budget, along with the venues and events that the parent would like to see for their students. We supposed to volunteer, figure out hours, you know, you have all these problems in schools, now y'all trying to call around every time we walk into school and put, like, we're the, we're the harmful people in our schools? Traditional public school stays public, it's a community school. We should not be hassled when we go in there to check on our kids, to make sure the teacher is doing what they're doing, to make sure the principal is doing what they're doing, because that's what we do. So I just want to know, you know, when you, when you take away these services from people, you're violating state mandates, and I don't have time to read all these mandates, but you are. Also, I've noticed, I did get from the state, the enrollment. All of our schools' enrollments increased, and I see we still closing schools. So as a traditional public schools, like the woman says, she loves choice, if the people are choosing traditional schools, you guys are going to have to start opening up space. So while you're considering that building right there of who's buying and what's buying, you need to consider, our, our schools is getting to capacity again, what are we going to do about that? Also, that brings me to staff. We got rid of a lot of staff in the last three years, and now that their kids are coming back to our schools, I'm concerned that they're not going to get their math, their English, their Spanish, all the subjects that they need to succeed because you guys have source for teachers in there, or you don't have permanent placement, or you had already pre-calculated our children not coming back, so you didn't have the staff there available for them. And another thing, shared services and partnership. When someone comes to present something for the district, and I agree with Viter early, the community needs to know. So they should come to the school board, have a presentation of what they want to offer to share services, or if it's a contract or partnership, so that the people know and they can see the proposal, see what they're offering to our students. Because we the ones who knows our students best, the community, so it should only be afforded to us to have that chance. Now, if we're going to be a school board and run that school board, I've, you know, I've been to all these districts around, and for the life of me, Camden, you guys got it so screwed up with the way y'all run y'all school district, the way that we have to go through a book in a matter of five minutes. This stuff should be online. I should have been able, online, with all this stuff, coming up here with the questions about, why is this, this, and why is that, that, and you can give me a hypothetical answer, instead of me waiting till the end of the night where I got to leave my family home and I didn't get to cook dinner because you got to answer all the questions at the end. Half the times I leave out here without the answers. And I still would like to know, where did the money for the swimming space go? Because the state, the SDA has to mandate at least two million dollars, or the max that was, to, for, we shouldn't have these problems with our schools, the plumbing and nothing. Those schools should have been set up and ready before those kids started school.
Rosa Trent.
Well, good evening. I haven't been here in a long time, but I've had several issues since school started. I didn't get to start the year with my kids. I didn't. I was in Puerto Rico in a hurricane because my grandmother passed away. So I didn't start school with my kids. I didn't get no meeting with the teachers, I didn't get no meeting with the principals, I didn't get any of that. Now, when I come home, I still don't get that. At Forest Hills, it's not a welcoming environment. I was denied to use the bathroom there today. Before, I picked my child up from school. It wasn't even dismissal time. So you tell me how it's okay. It's okay for me not to be able to walk my first grader to breakfast. It's okay for her to come home every day with a different substitute because her teacher quote-unquote resigned. We did not get paperwork on it, they did not robocall, they didn't have any knowledge, we didn't have any knowledge, the fact that this teacher was gone, except the substitute told us she wasn't returning. Then you have, you have it so that I have to make an appointment. When I go to the school, I say I want to walk around, it's my right to do that. I'm a parent volunteer. As you know, I'm involved in many schools. I'm involved in Brim because I have a child there. I run the school store there. I'm involved in Big Picture Learning because I have a child there. But yet I'm being denied access to the buildings. And Big Picture, I called you earlier, we spoke, Paymont, about the leak in the bathroom and how it was leaking into the FOC's office. It was leaking. I had pictures that I had sent you, correct? Okay, it's still leaking. I went in there today. I went in there today. I have more pictures. The toilet was running, there was a puddle underneath of it, even the sinks are still running. But you told me, correct? Did you or did you not tell me that you had somebody in there that fixed it today? You did. That's the conversation we had, correct? Okay, it wasn't fixed. It wasn't. Then let's talk about your staff members and how they're being overextended there in the annex. You don't have what they need. You don't have it. Why? Because the transition was not smooth at all. If it wasn't for my son and myself painting the annex building, painting the doors, the floor, whatever they needed painted, we were there painting, my son and I. But you did not have any staff members there, except for Mr. A, he was there, and Ms. Bradley. They were the only two people, and myself and my, and my seventh grader, that attends Big Picture in the annex. But when I brought this to you, you says to me what? That was in, that was in, they had that money to hire those people, they didn't. Then again, you had stuff stacked up before school even started. Two weeks, three weeks before school started, nobody was moving a thing. Everyone was sitting around, just doing nothing. But then you had people in there with ankle monitors coming in and moving stuff last minute. But this was on the books. You were supposed to have this done. Don't look around like you don't know what I'm talking about because I have pictures. I have pictures. Let's just keep it real with you. You don't know what's going on in these schools. You want to know why every time you show up, it's all roses and ribbons and, and bubblegums and all this other stuff. Every day is not like that. We are, we are being mistreated as parents. We are. They are not allowing us our rights, and our children are the ones that are suffering. You tell me how that is doing your job. Not to mention, the staff members are unhappy. On the first day of school, my son was told, if you're caught walking into the Camden High side of the building without a pass or an escort, you're going to be suspended on the spot. My seventh grader, my seventh grader who gets honor roll, my seventh grader, please tell me why.
Amir Khan.
Good evening. You know, I first wasn't going to speak tonight, I actually told them to cross my name off off the list, but I just felt that I needed to say a few words. First of all, it was great seeing everybody back at the Camden High and Woodrow Wilson back-to-school greeting. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but then when I started hearing KIP and Mastery and the parents and children getting up, speaking, and promoting the school, I just had to address something. I'm all for marketing and promoting, that's my specialty, that's my background, but I hate seeing what it's doing with the parents and children in Camden. Because the fact of the matter is, whether they go to a charter school, Renaissance school, or a traditional public school, they're still, the kids of Camden still are kids. You know, when I take off this activist hat and I wear the pastoral hat, and I do so many funerals and vigils around Camden for their kids that have been killed and murdered, and their dads, their uncles, their aunts and uncles, you know, we never ask what school they go to. We never ask, are they charter, Renaissance, or public? And what I see is division that's happening, you know, and I'm not faulting the parents who were here tonight. God bless those little children that got up smoking. Obviously, it was prepared, obviously somebody helped them write it. I don't believe anybody just got with them, I, I don't believe on their own they just decided to write that out. And that's okay, I'm not even knocking that, I'm not even knocking that. But I want you to understand, and those are listening, of the spirit of division that it's putting into the city of Camden. We watched, I don't even want to say President Trump, but we watched Number Forty-five this past Friday, speaking in Alabama of all places, and make the statements that he made, it's creating more division in this country than ever before. When I moved out of Camden, my father moved us when the riots hit and we moved the children. When I moved out of Camden, my father moved us, when the riots hit, and we moved to Cherry Hill, and we watched kids standing in front of our house, using the N-word, go back to Africa. First week out there, we had our windows shot out. I couldn't believe the division and problems in the late 60s that we experienced. There's more division today than there was then. And I'm saying Camden is a microcosm of what's happening in this country. And I hate seeing Camden children, Camden families, being pitted one against another. I'm not even saying the board can do anything about it, or maybe you're aware of what a KIP, a Mastery. I would hate to see all the traditional public schools start marching against kids and parents, because now they're getting involved in stuff that they really shouldn't. I watched those little children just now, I don't know if you saw them, they just walked out a little while ago, but they're listening to things that they shouldn't have to listen to. And it's division. And I'll leave you with this, there's a great scripture, the Psalmist David, he wrote this in Psalms, he said, "How beautiful it is when people come together in unity." Because when you come together in unity, he says, "That's where the hand of God and the blessing of God comes upon you when you're operating in unity." I'm going to parathetically insert this, that how beautiful it is when the residents of the city of Camden come together in unity, because then we'll receive the blessing of God. What we're receiving is division. Because right now, all of a sudden, it's not those parents' fault. All they want is the best for their kids, whether they go to KIP, Norcross, Mastery, wherever. They just want the best. You can take the most riotous person in here, Sister Vita, I guarantee you, even Sister Vita will still support those families and those children, because they're families of Camden. We have to make sure we don't allow the spirit of division and strife to continue to sweep through Camden. We're already seeing it in the country. Let's stop it here. Thanks, and God bless you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Shawn Miles, and I'm a parent and a parent advocate leader for Parents with Great Camden Schools. And I'm here today to talk about KIP with you. My stepdaughter recently enrolled at KIP with you this previous school year. And her previous school was excellent in the curriculum, but lacked the extracurricular programs. At KIP, her teachers cared, you know, make learning fun for her. Mostly important, what depressed me was their STEM program, because it was more hands-on than more, you know, textbook reading in the textbooks. And I also liked, you know, the building was bright, you know, it was up to date, you know, with technology, and all, you know, and all of that good stuff. And I feel she's getting a quality education, you know, in the 21st century school, you know, it was up to date and everything. And, you know, I just like, all the kids, all the kids, all schools had the same thing. You know, that's all I want.
Good evening to the board members, and to everybody, to our superintendent. Thank you for letting me, giving me this time to speak. Nobody wrote it, I wrote it. Now, I want to thank you for giving my children a chance to pick, or us to pick, where we want to go. I had an experience with Camden schools, and you know that. We shared it, I've shared it many times on this ground. I got three graduates, I got three diplomas hanging on my wall, I can't use, because my children graduated from Camden School can't read and write. I got three diplomas I could bring, because of that, no school left behind soon. Remember? My son is 33 years old and can't go to college. 27 and can't go to college. 34 and can't go to college. I am glad, I am happy, I pray to God, I thank God, that we have a choice today, that we can pick and choose where our children go to, that we can walk through the schools and they'll let us in, that principal greet kids on first-name basis. I'm talking about first-name basis. My principal at Mastery McGraw stands every morning, high-fives, and calls out names of all those childrens. When have I seen a public principal greet their children at the door? When I was, when my children were, they never greet them. There was always division then, because I remember the gang members fighting between the Korean, the Puerto Ricans, the blacks, they were always fighting. So what are we talking, division? It's been going on for many years. Today, we are fighting the bullies. We are doing that. Today, we have the numbers, it says it, come on, people. We don't want to divide Camden. We want children to rise. I want lawyers, I'm not talking about mines alone, I want lawyers, doctors, I want teachers coming out of this city. If it comes out of Haddon Township, if it comes out of Glor, why not Camden? And we had a few, but a few that our fingers could count. We want more, we want more. And if it takes for the Renaissance, Mastery, whatever, to come and bring it out, let's applaud it, because it's our children. We are the adults, we are the one that divides, not them, because when we get Mastery and KIP to play together, they play as children. They don't point, "Oh, you're Mastery and I'm KIP, we know better." No, they don't do that. They play. They share lunches. And we're not all here. We Puerto Ricans, Mexican, watermelons, blacks, Koreans, we are a pot, a melting pot, and that's what Camden is. So let's treat it like that. Let's treat each children with that respect. Let's love our children. It's us, we're the one that are dividing, the adults, not the children. Teach our children to love one another. Let's get the schools together. Let's get the public schools together. I don't care. It's about our children, and that's what we forget. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I didn't prepare anything, as I usually do, but I'd just like to clarify certain things. For those of you who think that folks who are pro-public schools mean we're against the parents or the kids that go to the Renaissance schools, that's patently false. As a parent and a resident, my daughter went to our public schools here, out of care and out of how much I care about my neighbors, which is y'all, I have deep concerns with the way these schools are teaching your kids. For instance, those Renaissance schools will talk about how great they're doing in test scores. I'm going to tell you, as someone who had the fortune and was blessed to attend college, all that standardized test stuff stops. The college professors aren't checking for that. The things that have been ingrained in our neighborhoods, specifically our black and brown neighborhoods, as what's important, what education looks like, the colleges don't care about that. This, as much as they think it's college prep, it's really not. So the, they're taking the standardized tests, A, B, choose A, B, C, D, or E, that stuff stops at high school. Because the moment you guys get through your freshman classes, your sophomore, your junior, and your senior year, you're not taking no, you're not taking no standardized tests no more. So again, out of concern, I am concerned for what they're delivering to you guys, and what is being promoted as good education. But that's just as an aside. I am proud, as a CEA president, that the relationship we have largely with our schools and our administration, kind of except for one school, Forest Hill, is really, really decent. And the principals are happy to see CEA folks walk through the building, because they know that we're there to sort of support the schools and try to advocate to make sure that they have everything that they want. And there's some folks down here at the district that work downtown, that I have a whole lot of respect for. And some, not so much, but there's some that I respect a whole lot. I would like to also point out that enrollment in all of our schools has exceeded what was projected, despite the fact that they have all these new schools. Some parents might have experienced that and decided, you know what, let's go back to what I know, and go back to what I'm comfortable with, because they see some value in what we're offering at our public education institutions, and I'm proud that our enrollment is higher. And it's a good sign, and I'm proud of it. I did have questions about the intermural, about the middle school sports, ensuring that it's interscholastic, like a school's competing against other schools and not just intermural. And also, I would also like to mention that Camden enrollment is no longer part of our school district, so I will be telling folks from now until June, if you want your kid in your public school, don't go through Camden enrollment at all. Just go straight to your school, because we know, and I'm getting the script pretty soon, I'm getting the script that Camden enrollment used. We know Camden enrollment plays games with our enrollment. So because of that, we will skip right by it and continue to boost our public school enrollment. Also, I would like to know, and this is directed to the superintendent, I would like to know who specifically is responsible to ensure that our schools are staffed appropriately in accordance with the law? And I'm asking that question for a very specific reason, because the law and board policy dictates what our class sizes are supposed to be. And in too many of our classes, we are breaking the law, and we are breaking board policy. So I would like to know who specifically is responsible for ensuring that we're operating in accordance with the law? We're supposed to have, by law, librarians and media service specialists. By law, this is not just me making it up, the law says that. The law also says that children are supposed to have a certain amount of time of health and physical education. By law. And a lot of our kids, or too many are not getting that, which has been prescribed, again, by law. By law. We are supposed to, and Brother Brown mentions this a lot, that we are supposed to have a talented and gifted curriculum. So how my man just came, who was here, from Parents with Great Camden Schools, was talking about how he's happy about their school STEM program. We are supposed to have something specifically for students who are identified as talented and gifted, and Brother Brown's been mentioning that for years. And what do we have? Now, in reference to schools still not being staffed appropriately, still, principals are clamoring for clerks. Principals are clamoring for paraprofessionals, they're clamoring for security.
Dr. Benson, please wrap up your comment.
Almost done. Those brothers back there, who are part of our security staff, you guys who make staffing decisions, may just see these young brothers as uniforms. But the reality is, each one of those brothers back there have guidance counselor presence, the presence of a male inside our schools as family members, uncles, cousins, people these children can go confide in.
Dr. Benson, please wrap up your comment.
These are problem solvers. But we have schools with only one security officer, despite the fact that our principals are saying we need more. And we have people on the board, or in central administration, who are responsible for staffing our schools appropriately. And I'm almost finished, brother.
Dr. Benson, your three minutes are up.
Last thing. One thing I would like to see the superintendent put out, being that our teachers are getting evaluated to death. Can you please send out an evaluation to the staff about the job that you're doing? So you can get feedback from us about what we think of what you're doing in our district. They might say you're doing a great job. I think it's worth a try. So, thanks a lot.
Bonnoche. Can't goodbye? About back in May, there was a riff of the clerks. And there was a process to hire bilingual, right? So from my findings, there was some type of assessment that was done for the clerks who remained. Number one, I would like to know that process, who took place in those assessments? And how were those who remained assessed? Like, how did you base that? What measure was used to keep those clerks to remain? Number one, I work with all clerks of all ethnicities around the world. And to find that there was a great deal of discrimination, Mr. Paymont, I'm looking at you, I like eye contact, please, thank you. Okay? So when that took place, it raised a question. Clerks, we are the school-based clerks, yes, we're involved with a lot of the parents and community, right? However, our interaction with the parents is not as great as the FOCs, the OMs, or the teachers. None of them have been qualified to be bilingual. However, if you look at the ratio of your staff that are FOCs and OMs, are they bilingual? That's a question I need to add, I need that answered. So those are the ones who are interactive with our parents most, more than us. Because see, when the parents come in to see me, they want to do a registration. Registration is very simple, you just simply read it, right? It's in English and in Latin. So if you speak Spanish, you'd be able to read Latin, and vice versa. So my question would be just that. And to help Dr. Benson, the program that you're talking about for the highly gifted was once birthed at Forest Hills, called CHIPS, Camden Honest Intermedia Scholars for here at the city of Camden. I saw a couple of them sitting, I got one here, Brother Ashan Hornsby. So I will say this, I'm just very perturbed about that process, and then to riff and cause disturbance in households, they were breadwinners, a lot of them were single mothers, okay? How did that process take place? So I need to know how the assessment was done, and if it was, I would like to challenge that. Thank you.
How's everyone doing today? I'm here on behalf of the nine brothers that was riffed, I mean, not riffed, that was on recall. I think that it was unjust for these nine brothers to be on-call, giving them this much hope that they'll get their job back. Now, I don't know what slang word laid off, or recall. Now, to me, recall means something that needs to be fixed and then put back out. Now, to play with, the nine officers say, yeah, we're going to have y'all on recall and don't call them back. It's like a slap in their face. You should have just laid them off and just say, okay, we're going to lay y'all nine off, and y'all have a good day. But what really made me upset is, two weeks later, in September, you put out hiring for subs. Man, that's a disrespect to our department. Now, I'm here to find justice for these nine brothers, I think these nine brothers should be called back, come back soon as possible, as I see fit, because it's wrong for having these brothers on recall and then put in the board minutes that we're hiring for subs, sub-security. I don't understand that part. Please help me understand that. No other department is doing that but us. So now, you trying to get rid of us? I think we do an excellent job, because like the brother said, the kids come and confide to us. Because like the brother said, the kids come and confide to us. We work with the kids. We there early in the morning, half the time before the custonians get there. We teach these kids. Now, I'm hearing that quote-unquote, some of our officers are secretaries. Come on, man. Well, if they're going to be secretaries, I think they should get paid secretary work. They should get paid. That's another thing I want to talk about. I think we need to get paid like teachers get paid. If we got to do more than what we supposed to do? Because it seem like our job description change every time. I'm not here to beat anybody up, but I'm just here for the nine officers that was unjust. They lost their jobs, they had families. I know everybody up here got families. So for y'all to put that in the board minutes and say, y'all on recall, and then turn around and slap them in the face and say, we not going to call y'all back, and then two months later, two weeks later, we hiring for subs. Now, two of them filled the applications out. None of them got hired yet. What's the point of that? Of putting that in the board minute if none of them going to get hired? I think out of the nine, you should call at least five of them back at full-time status. Why hire subs? These nine brothers know the buildings inside out. Camden High, Wilson, Hatch. They know the building. We need help. I'm going to tell you from my mouth, we need help. More kids we get, we need more officers. Now, come on, Mr. Paymon, now, we've been, we saw each other, phew, too many times. And now, and you know how it is at Woodrow Wilson. I'm not even going to get in there with that with you. You know how it is. I want you, I'm going to put it out there, I want you, one day, spend one day at Woodrow Wilson, see how it operates. And you can tell me if we need more officers or not. That's all I'm asking. I'm not threatening you, I'm just saying, one day, out of your busy schedule, here, right now, come, come to Woodrow Wilson. I'll walk you around personally. Come on to Woodrow Wilson, check it out. See what we go through each and every day. See what the teachers go through each and every day. Hear what the teachers are complaining about. I'm happy that I got a job, but it's just the fact that you playing with nine officers' hearts. And I don't think that was right for y'all to put that in the board minutes and then put, we hiring for subs on a board website. That's like a really disrespect to our department. And that's all I got to say. And I thank all the officers. Matter of fact, there were two of them right there. Hill and right there is one of them. And you got, well, White's still here. You got Butler, you got Bowman, you got Coleman. You know, these is good officers.
Mr. White, please wrap up your comments.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Kevin Barfield?
I have a couple of questions, Superintendent. One is, I guess I want to get to one of the most important ones before I lose out my time. Concern, and I want to know what is the update in reference to how the district is going to coordinate the CTE program with the Camelot population over at Woodrow Wilson? Because the understanding is, because of the fact that Camelot is a separate entity from Woodrow Wilson, the school district, that that's one of the programs that the children don't have access to. That Camelot program is an accelerated program. So we have students that we know that are grade levels behind, and nine times out of 10, a vocational program or opportunity is going to be in their best interest compared to going to college. So those children should have the same access to what's going on with that CTE program. The other thing in my concern is, as we're saying, is talking about what's going on in the district, for real, for real, is about equity. Equity in our schools. Equity in supposed to be traditional public schools, Camden High and Woodrow Wilson, and that goes along with staff. You know, so as I'm looking at your superintendent's report, page 37, when we're talking about the Camden County Educational Service Commission, I'm seeing too often underneath our eyes that our services are being outsourced to these county agencies. And when you look at the money, I don't understand, because it seem like for $500,000, just like on page 37, when we talking about providing 75 students for transitional services at a pop of $6,060 per student, what kind of services are being provided? And then I can, and I know for a fact, without even getting the research of the data, that I know we got to have more than 75 students in special education that's entitled to transitional services. Other part to that is having transitional service is according to your IEP. How many of these parents know about that? Because since you've been here, we've talked about, we should have had a transitional coordinator in our comprehensive high schools since you've been here. And only within the last year, it's been outsourced through Camden County Commission, which also, right now and again, IEPs. You know, so I'm looking at the fact that even like, at the beginning, when I'm looking at the bilingual, and I'm seeing that you're compensating these bilingual teachers to come in here, why is that not taking place with the special needs? Because special needs, we need staff and we need permanent people to be there, and there needs to be incentives for them too, just as much it is for the bilingual population. The other thing is, even like last month, why is the district labeling the building principal of Woodrow Wilson as a bilingual principal? Because I never knew that you hired specifically based on ethnicity. So with that, and then as, you know, closing out, oh, the one thing too is the Safe Haven program. I see you have Safe Haven along for ECDC. So make me understand that years ago, when the security came in, Mr. Bland, y'all promoted this Safe Haven throughout the school district. That was part of this promotion updating security, safety in the schools, blah, blah, blah. So make me understand why, and I'm only seeing something in reference to safety through ECDC and not through a lot of our areas in our school where we know our children have a challenge getting to school. And ending on that again, is that you cannot compare Renaissance charter schools to our public high schools, because just like we said earlier, our enrollment in our public schools are increasing. Why? Because the charter schools in the Renaissance are sending these students back. And that's not being addressed. So you can't compare any of the tests going down. The closest ones who was close to that, which was done through an extensive article last year, was Sharp. Sharp actually had some of those higher at risk and still was turning and having those students achieve. But we're talking about numbers. We're talking about cohorts. So you can't compare those. So, you know, when we talk about one school is doing better than the other, those other schools are not dealing with the inequities and inconsistency in staffing and the shortage of staffing that our public schools are constantly having to overcome. And that's definitely a reflection on our park scores.
Mr. Barfield, please wrap up your time.
I definitely want to see the breakdown in reference to fifth to eighth graders and our ninth to 12th grade students, and what are they doing on the park? And I know we still are not on point with our technology.
Mr. Mongaliso Davis?
First, I'd like to say to the chair, board members, and to family out in the audience, before I talk about what I come here for. To the family, I'm doing well, looking well. And of course, you haven't seen me, I do know a lot of stuff. And I'm compelled to come to the school board meeting about what I hear, what's going on in the schools, what I'm hearing about people stealing from Camden High, about employees, superintendents, coaching, about superintendents going to have office downtown at Rutgers and not with the staff. And I want to say this, you better be in a trailer at Washington School and not at Rutgers. You go with your staff. Now, you know what I'm talking about. You go with the staff, if that's so. The other thing I wanted to say, a comment that was made by this mutinoy in the White House, to tell you about my queen and my mother. The black woman is not a dog. She is the mother of the universe. Every woman of any U or color came from the black. Every one. Other than has not been blessed by melanin in their skin, came from a black. Two hundred queens in New York, and only forty kings. That shows you the power of the queen and the mother. And the premise is the same, that he, the person, or that we who are kneeling, it's about the national anthem. I don't care about the national anthem. We were enslaved when the national anthem was being played. I don't stand for it either. And my constitutional right and their constitutional right, going to give them a right to tell them that they should be disrespected by their mother or threatened about their jobs. You see, he's a mutinoy, and nowhere in our history that we came out of kings. Nowhere. And I challenge anybody on the question. To the chair, Mr. Paymon. I heard you on the question about the swing space. A year ago, we all was up at the school construction. And they said that it was money for the students at Camden High to go to any school outside of the district. We were all there, you were there, and you was there with the voters, the politicians. Don't act like you lost it, because even they was up there. The $2 million to swing space to find adequate facilities, adequate, not sick, schools. There is enough parochial schools that are closed that's sitting there outside of the city of Camden. And you chose that. Don't act like you writing that, because they say it was given to you when they told you about the armory down in the Baptist Street would be the good place for swing space. Now, you done gave $800,000 to the Boys and Girls Club. You don't have an inventory.
Mr. Davis, please wrap up your comments.
Don't interfere with Mr. Roland. You're not going to be here. You're going to have to leave with your partner.
Tell them truth.
Young man, he told you what was happening. He told everybody what was happening. Okay? Let me close on this. Mr. Paymon, you have ripped a lot of people's lives.
Yes, you have.
I can't take that no more. You're going to have to go. You're going to have to go, man. Soon.
That's right. Real sorry.
Soon.
That's right. Excellent.
I was over at City Hall today, Octavia Cat.
Yeah.
And some people from Philadelphia asked me where was the kids in Catholic school. Mr. Luke Mann, who built the school, who was the contractor, where was the Camden children from that school over there, like the other schools, or children from the state? And I heard that a question was raised about coming over there and it was shot down and didn't get no question at all.
Mr. Davis, please wrap up your comments.
I'm not going to bother you, old man. But you better be careful with the company you keep. Let me hear you up there doing something illegal.
Mr. Stan White?
I'm not going to be, one thing I'm concerned about is what the kids here, adults, talk about. And what I witnessed today, I hope that never happens here at the Board of Education, again, Division. Paymon, or Superintendent, I'm challenging you to reach out to every principal in your school this month. Have a principal and two students from every public school come before this mic, like we used to, and talk about the quality of education and how much Camden City kids love their schools. I mean, I think that would be simple to do. I got a good friend back there, Ruiz, and to hear that every principal don't give that handshake and knows every name, I felt for her today. I really did. I felt for her when she had to reach out to paint a school? Uh-uh, not the community. That's the board's job. You got painters. If a school was that bad, I don't know if any painters were there with Ms. Ruiz. I don't know if any administrators were there, any chiefs of staff. Who was there to help her paint this beautiful school? So let's go past there. School violence report, be careful what you report. I went to the internet, went to the state of New Jersey, school violence report website here and today, and this led me to what I'm going to say. Seem like we need school officers. But if you read the violence vandalism report that's put out by the state of New Jersey, we only reported 22 reportable incidents last year. That's two a year, two a month. Cherry Hill had 70. So I guess, Superintendent, I'm asking, by state statute, that somebody was talking about Keith, you supposed to have a report every year to the public, not on the website, not on the webpage, about incidents in our school. I guess my question is, has it happened? I heard Carrie talk about the band instruments. I was here at the board when a director of music and arts got money from leftover to buy instruments for them schools. Three years ago, or four at the most. Where's those instruments? Before the kids got to raise money, have we as a board looked into grants, foundations, entrepreneurs, philanthropists? Have we asked, I'll be damned if you need to raise money for instrumental kids? Something wrong with that board. Marketing of Camden City schools. Keith, I got to acknowledge you, you're doing a heck of a job, brother. I got to acknowledge that. Now, my question to the board is how much money is in each school's budget to market their school? Please, get back to me on that. Truancy? That parent stood here and said something about, we are educating our kids and when they get to college, they can't read, write, or whatever. Mr. White has always had a personal interest in that. Teachers want to hold back students because they don't know how to read or write. Or 50 days absent in truancy. Superintendent, who promotes those kids? Superintendent, who promotes those kids to the next grade? It's not the teachers. Not the guidance counselors. Who does it from administration that promote those kids? I'm getting too passionate. Thank you, Board of Education, for listening to me tonight. Thank you.
That concludes public comment. All right, let me first thank all the parents who showed up this evening, whether they are charter parents, Renaissance School parents, or traditional public school. Always appreciate you all coming out. Let me go through the specific questions that I jotted down and respond to some general themes and trends during the conversation today, which have certainly come up in prior conversations. So memorabilia, the Camden High transition inventory. So our committees, and this was led by the chairwoman, Delia Brown, went through the building along with our facilities crew. Mark Phillips played a significant role, he's a committee member. He was, as I'm sure you know, focused on the sports memorabilia given, he's the athletic director. And to make a long story short, they worked diligently to build an inventory, to move items, to work with our team to move those items to a warehouse. And so I can't comment on allegations that certain individuals took things from the building, or there were items discovered in a dumpster. At the end of the day, those are allegations. I know that our team, again, worked incredibly hard to transition those items. We are going to be doing an auction for the basketball court floor. We're going to carve it up into smaller pieces and we're going to auction those items to the alumni. It's not a significant cost for those items. It's a fundraiser for student activity funds, if you will. And so we are working to ensure that alumni have access to the history of the school. We've pulled time capsules from the building, they're all sitting, I mean, a whole variety of items that we found, and they're sitting in a warehouse. And if anyone wants to discuss those items in more detail, we'd be happy to do it. But again, I can't, I can't comment on any, any allegations around whether those items were removed. I can tell you that our team just worked incredibly hard over the last several months to be able to make it a successful transition. There's a comment made about sneakers given away, the FOC gave away sneakers to a cheerleading team, and that those items are going to be discarded. It was on Facebook, it was a public, it was a public matter. The marching band, let me just quickly comment there. So we have not, at least I have not personally heard from Ms. Spearman. And so in the past, she has been very vocal, she has reached out to me directly and board members and our administration. And to the extent there was ever fundraising needs, we've always been helpful. So this is the first I'm hearing of their fundraising bind. I spoke to one of their students recently, they have an event coming up, October 14th and 15th. And they, they asked if we can contribute. I said absolutely. So we are going to make some phone calls tomorrow and we're going to be supportive. And that's the bottom line. We always have been historically. So again, that's the first time that I'm personally hearing about the marching band. Ms. Vida, you raised some questions along with a few other people around swing space. So the SDA had a rough budget for the swing space and it was in their, I guess, agenda or in their kind of overall set of documents that was approved during that board meeting that I believe you attended. And so right now, the budget they've allocated to us, that's roughly what we have spent. So the lease payment for the Boys and Girls Club is 200,000 dollars a year. Over four years, that's 800,000 dollars. There are significant costs to transition all of the resources to the Hatch building. We've put money into that building. So for example, there were additional lockers that were implemented into the building. There was the CTE equipment that was implemented there, the sinks for the cosmetology room, et cetera. And, and just all the people power that is required to move all these resources. I don't know if we've spent exactly 2 million dollars, but the SDA is covering those costs. Those costs are ongoing, just like the lease is, is an annual cost of the Boys and Girls Club. Hold on, let me, let me.
They have two sinks and she has 24 children. So if you want to do hair and you have two sinks, 24 children, no hair dryer, okay? That's not appropriate. The SDA didn't do a good job. See, because I'm in that school, I'm not telling you what I think. I'm telling you what I know. And that school was not prepared, okay? Just like none of our schools. Now I want to know why did you take children and put them in Hatch? Tim Jenkins should have stayed in Hatch. Camden High students should have went over there to the Boys and Girls Club. Because the reason for the transition is Camden High students. They shouldn't be in that environmentally sick school. I'm calling for help. I'm calling for help.
Boys and Girls Club has 12 classrooms. There's, there's no way possible that Camden High could be in the Boys and Girls Club. Let's all remember that there was a commitment and an agreement made from the very beginning that Camden High would, one, remain together as one school community, and two, remain in the Parkside community. And so we accomplished that objective. Is, is everything perfect? Absolutely not. We all acknowledged from the very get-go that transition is challenging and transition is temporary. And we're going to get through it. And I really do believe that, given where we started with Forest Hill, you may remember it was the original starting point, and we got a lot of feedback that that was in the right place. And we went down and explored every last possibility. And we actually asked a school to move out of Boys and Girls Club to be able to accommodate boys, to be able to accommodate BPLA. We've come a really long way. It's not perfect. I'm not here to tell you that we spent 2 million dollars on two sinks at Camden High. I'm just telling you there are a long list of investments that we have made in Camden High School. So just, just moving on here to some of the other questions you raised.
Sorry, we have to get you. In order to talk, you have to press the buttons for you to hear us. Give the superintendent the opportunity to report back out to you on the questions that you've asked. And then if there's something that you need sidebar afterwards, I'll, we'll see if he can talk with you. I hear you, Vida, but we got, we have to get through. Let us get through this evening. There are parents that are here who needs to get home. So if there's something else at the end, then we will talk to you about that. We're not saying take you to the side. But let him complete the questions that have been asked. Let him answer that for you at least. Thank you.
That's charming, thank you. So with the rest of the space that's being used, the Rutgers question was raised by you, Ms. Vida, and I presented earlier on that we are using Rutgers. I think you, you raised the question of whether we are using Rutgers for basketball space, and we absolutely are going to be using it for seven home games. The restroom situation at BPLA, look, we're going to send someone there first thing tomorrow. It should not be happening. We are going to send someone there first thing tomorrow. That's all, that's all I can tell you. We're going to send someone there first thing tomorrow. I apologize. We are not perfect, but we are responsive. And I'm, and, and Ms. Trent, we are going to send someone there first thing tomorrow. To the question around kind of a welcoming atmosphere at our schools, and that was, by the way, raised by a number of different, not a number of different people, at least two different times it was raised. One by a traditional public school parent, Ms. Trent, and another by Ms. Pabon. And your experiences when you had your students in traditional public schools and your satisfaction with the experience you're having with your youngest child at Mastery. I want to say just a few things. One, I'm sorry that you had those experiences with your students when they went through our traditional public schools. Thrilled to hear that you're satisfied with Mastery. I will say that the schools when I visit, the principals when I see them in the morning, including Ms. Harrigan here who's seated in this room, they greet every last child when they walk in. And Ms. Ruiz does that each and every morning. And I want to just tip my hat to each and every one of you. I see Mr. Jones doing that, Camden High School at Hatch. And so we see that commitment from our school leaders and I just, again, want to acknowledge that. And to the extent that's not the case at, say, Forest Hill, let's have that conversation. That's not experience that I've had. I agree with you, when I visit a school, I sometimes get a dog and pony show. I hear you on that. And so we have other staff that go and visit the schools and they send back certain reports. But I hear you, when the superintendent visits, you get a different experience. I'm not naive, I get it. Forest Hill, as you saw during the presentation, has seen unbelievable growth in student achievement. We should celebrate that. There are certainly things that every school can do better. And so we will follow up and hope to do better on the customer service front there. Mr. Turcon and a few other people who raised kind of the issue of division. I want to just share my two cents. I'm not asking you to agree with me. I'm not asking anyone in this room to agree with me. I respectfully view that issue very, very differently. I think that charter versus Renaissance versus district schools, in this room, once a month, there is division. And you can feel it, you can hear it. And I've said this before, out in the community, that is not the way it plays out. I can't tell you how many families I come across where they've got one child in a traditional public school, two at a charter school, and one in a Renaissance school. That's not how it plays out amongst our families. I don't believe that there's division in the way they make these decisions in the best interest of their children. I don't believe that the vitriol that often is infused in our dialogue exists at the family dinner table, or at the community center, or at the basketball court, or really anywhere else in the city outside of this board meeting. And I would only ask us to reflect on why is that the case here and not really the case anywhere else. And that's just my two cents, I'm not asking you to agree with me. On the questions that were raised about enrollment. So it is certainly true that certain schools' current enrollment exceeded what was projected to be the case. Projected enrollment is a guessing game. There's no precision to, I mean, there's some degree of precision, but it's not 100% accurate. And so, yes, some schools exceeded their enrollment projection. Forest Hill is an example of that. Other schools came in below their enrollment projections. And so across the board, our enrollment as a district is down from last year modestly. But some schools absolutely did exceed their enrollment projections. On staffing, two or three people commented on staffing, including Dr. Benson and Ms. Ragsdale. I'm going to let our deputy superintendent, who really leads, as you all know, our academics and staffing and personnel inside of our schools, I'm going to let her comment on how we think about staffing. And some of the specific questions that were raised.
Absolutely. So I've heard all of the questions and all of the comments and want to just share a few pieces. And again, after this is over, I know we want to do our best to share all of this information with the whole group. But if there's anyone who also still does want to have a discussion privately, that is also fine. When it comes to vacancies, and we know that is so critically important, as we try to ensure that our students have access to a curriculum that's going to help prepare them to move forward in college career and beyond, that we have our classrooms fully staffed. So when we look at our vacancy rates now, we're working incredibly hard, along with our partners in DTLR, to have a great teacher in every classroom throughout the district. And today, we are down to a total of 14, 14 vacancies. And then being in this district for 23-plus years, starting off as a kindergarten teacher, that is a point to celebrate. That is one of the lowest vacancy rates. And I'm not only telling you that for any other, from any other vantage point, but from my own experience as a classroom teacher and as well as an administrator. So we're at a good place. Does that mean that we have all of the teachers in our classrooms, the numbers that we need? Absolutely not. But we are working hard to ensure that we do continue to build on that positive momentum. That 14 total, number of 14 total vacancies represents about 1.8% of the teaching positions in the district, just 1.8%. This is, again, the lowest that we've had at this point in many years. But these numbers don't take into account leaves of absences. So we also have staff members who are on extended leaves of absence for whatever reason. It is their right to take advantage of that because they may have to take care of themselves or family members. But those leaves of absences also cause us to have to have more substitutes in our classrooms. So we have the 14 vacancies, those are positions that are not filled yet, but we are diligently working to fill them, and we have some candidates in the pipeline. But then we also have some teachers who are on leave of absences, and they also create vacancies as well. Our superintendent already had alluded to class sizes and the discussion around class sizes. And again, I just want to share from my vantage point as a principal in the district, every year in September, this is something, not something that is just started, but we go through a leveling process where we look at the enrollment across the district and we look at what numbers are, what, what schools or grade levels and buildings are under-enrolled and which ones are over-enrolled. And we make the necessary shifts in order to ensure that we have the staff members that are with the, the most students that we need. So that leveling process happens all throughout the month of September. And we know that we also have the ASCE count in October. So this is something that is, that does happen each and every year in the school district. While we are leveling, we are, we are quickly being responsive and moving staff members from under-enrolled spots to those spots that are, that are, that are over, over-rolled spot, under-enrolled to over-enrolled spots. And we did that for cream in our pre-K program. We had a certain number of sections there. We didn't have enough students to fill those sections. So in collaborating with the director of early childhood, decided, under the superintendent's guidance and permission, to move teachers who were in classrooms that were empty over into classrooms that needed teachers so that we wouldn't have to have substitutes. That is the same process we are replicating as often as we possibly can. It is not perfect, but we are doing everything that we can to look at our, our numbers across the district and to right-size accordingly. There were a few other pieces. So with regard to gifted and talented, and I do, everything that I'm talking to you about and everything that we talk to you about, we feel very personally invested in. But as a student in the district who is a product of the gifted and talented program, I shared with you before that we are doing what we can to meaningfully create a program that will be sustainable and that will meet the needs of the students in our district. So we have made some strides. Our goal by the end of this year is to have a pilot program in place for our K to eight schools. We've already had one meeting with Rowan University, Dean Monica Shealy, in September, where we have put together a plan for research and for getting consultation from the graduate program of education at Rowan. So we make sure that our program is rebuilt, is brought back to life, but on the principles of research and best practices. So that meeting was held. We also have sent out a call for a working group that will begin next week for gifted and talented in the district in our K to eight buildings. So we are moving forward. I ask that you continue to advocate, continue to ask questions. But I just want you to know the truth of what we're doing. We're moving forward with researching and putting in place something that will be able to last for another, that will be able to last and be effective at educating our gifted and talented learners. With regard to high school gifted and talented learners, we have already implemented our summit learning. It is, the pilot is being implemented now at Canva and also at BRIM Medical Arts. That is the pilot. That is not to say that we're only focusing on those locations. But we have already moved forward under the guidance of our high school team and Ms. Anish Arak with moving that forward as well. So we are collecting data, we're collecting evidence, because as we're piloting, we want to make sure that we're doing this in a very meaningful and a very thoughtful way. Library media specialist was the last item that I'd like to speak to. For the past few years, we have had this conversation. Sometimes it's been a debate, sometimes it's been a healthy discussion, sometimes I'm not sure what it's been. But we've had a conversation about library media specialist. And the fact that we know that in our district, we have made certain shifts. So with regard to curriculum and ensuring that we are still making sure that our students are exposed to library and information skills, we have continued to build our classroom libraries. We have continued to work with our curriculum team to make sure that informational technology, that our students are learning those research skills as they are being exposed to lessons in classrooms. So it's not something that can only be taught in a traditional library setting. But we are also refurbishing our libraries. Woodrow Wilson High School, that library is in the process of being refurbished and it looks beautiful. We are looking at many different ways to hit that area. And the last point I'll say about that is that Ms. Tanya Wilson, who is over our special area teachers, in, in combination or in collaboration with Ms. Andrea Ometry, who's over our school-based youth services team, have worked together through a partnership and a grant in order to bring one digital literacy specialist to our district and also one digital literacy coordinator who will also help to augment our ability to make sure that our students are getting exposed to information technology through a blended learning model. So we may not have a library media specialist in each building, but at the district level, we do have guidance and we are working with our curriculum team to ensure that our students are exposed in our classrooms and that they are receiving that guidance that they need.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. McCums. Let's just take one, let's take one quick question. Let's just take one, let's take one quick question.
You said the libraries, if they could have, you said Woodrow Wilson.
Yes, Ms. Ragsdale. Say that once again, I'm sorry.
The programs for the media or whatever you were saying, for the library, you didn't do one in the elementary school?
No, so that is, that's in the element, that's in the family schools as well. The Woodrow Wilson, the Woodrow, no, it's not just, I'm sorry. What'd you say?
The library.
Yeah, so Cooper's Point is one. The, that program that I'm talking about with Light Sale, the blended learning, it's Cooper's Point. It's also Yorkship. I can get you the names of the other buildings, but it's a handful of buildings. Woodrow Wilson, what I was referring to, is the refurbishment of that library, the new furnishing that's been purchased, the new technology equipment. That's a separate, that was a separate project that, yeah. I'm sorry if I was not clear. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. McCombs. Appreciate that. Going down the list here, Ms. Ragsdale asked a question about CUSAC, and so I just wanted to comment that we have done a CUSAC presentation every annual submission cycle. And I also had the county, you may remember the county superintendent, join us at a board meeting during our last comprehensive review. And we were, so your question is timely, we were just notified that our next three-year comprehensive review will be at the end of this year. So once we get closer to that process, we'll share out more information. But whenever there has been something to share, we have shared it here publicly at the board meeting. Ms. Lozato, you commented about the bilingual clerks, along with FOCs and OMs. So really quickly, the clerks that went through that process, so the process consisted of a bilingual assessment, which was administered by a bilingual central office staff member. If you'd like to see the bilingual assessment, we'd be happy to share with you, but there was an actual bilingual assessment that was administered. Yes.
Okay. So I understand that it was not a bilingual assessment, it was one person, which was a clerk, and one of your staff was over here who was not bilingual. So that's from my understanding, and was asked in Spanish, do you speak Spanish? And she said, no, I speak English. So, so that is a big concern, and I understand that this district, according to most state law, that this is an equal opportunity employer and not a discriminatory employer based on ethnicity. So again, I pose a question from my findings, and I do have witnesses, that based on the hiring and those who were remade was based on a discriminatory background, and that is unfair labor practices according to state law.
Yeah, I just, so I just want to be clear. Requiring bilingual is not, is not ethnic. There are people of multiple ethnicities that speak a second language.
I'm multi-ethnic. I can speak several languages.
So you are aware then that people who speak a second language don't necessarily have to be from the place where the second language originates? So just because we require bilingual does not mean that we are in any way discriminating against any employees from being hired by the Camden City School District?
I will challenge you again on that because based on those who were remade were all Latino, were all of Hispanic background, all who were let go were of African descent.
That's discrimination.
I have a challenge on this, sir.
Yes, yes.
No, I won't. I'll have my turn to do that.
That was going to be my recommendation. I look forward to it.
What happened to the last term? Why are you up there?
If you can't answer that, my question would be answered. I wanted to find out, how did y'all change that plan and action, but never presented that to us? And I probably only missed about one quarter, but that's what I was looking for, the action plan. The 29 findings in December 2015 about Title I funding and the ESL learning and the specialties, there was over 29 findings. I didn't see any action plans since.
I didn't see any.
Yeah, you're referring to the Consolidated Monitoring Plan. Yeah, that's a, that's a separate entity.
Right, but I mean, for the parents and residents, we should have a presentation of the action plan and how that was getting rectified. Because see, when I go up to the state, they tell me everything's good, but if I overwork your action plan, I don't.
No, there was, and we'll share with you. Yeah, look, last comment on bilingual clerks and bilingual positions in general. We hear all the time very reality-based, understandable complaints about staff who are not able to communicate with parents who are Spanish speakers or speak another language, right? And so we have to be mindful of that challenge. You're absolutely right. We also need to be mindful of good hiring practices. And so, look, at the end of the day, if there is an allegation, there's a legal process for that, and we're going to take that seriously, and we are going to listen with open ears and follow up in due course. But that is why we have bilingual positions. And so I want to move on from this, but there was another comment about the bilingual principal at Woodrow Wilson. I think that came from Mr. Davis. No, that came from Mr. Barfield. And it's the same, it's the same answer that you just heard from, from Mr. Roll here, which is, we were asking for the skill, the ability to speak another language. It was not about the ethnicity we were seeking. And we do believe that at Woodrow Wilson, Mr. James is off to a wonderful start. So I'm going to, I'm going to move on. Officer White.
You put it right, it was bilingual, right?
Correct. It's the position.
Here's my only opposition to that, okay? If we're going to hire anyone who speaks that language, which is an additional skill, it's a skill, you give them an increment and/or stipend, not dismiss them. That's the concern that I have. And that's why I say it will be challenged, because if I have, watch this, two Latinos in the building, but we're constantly used, and she's not being compensated for her services. She wasn't hired, and she is Latino and speaks it. And that's why I asked the question, I want to test it. Okay? So if you're hiring those who can speak fluently and read, because I look at other scales across the country, how they basically, if it's fluent, if it's traditional, or just conversational, that's a different thing. I'm not having a great conversation here with my sister, Ms. Trent. If I speak to her, she hears English, okay? And we're going to speak in English, right? But when it comes to most of my Hispanic parents, right, I'm going to have conversational Spanish about how to register a child or just general questions in English. So my, my thing is, it should have been a stipend to either the student principal and/or the clerks who pass the test. It's that simple. But the hiring practices is unethical and was wrong. Period.
Is the board bilingual?
Good question.
You're correct. In the past, if there was something that was needed, then they would give the person a stipend. When people were hired in those positions, they were not hired, instead you must be bilingual in order to keep that position. So, so I thought that in order for the board to hear it and bring it back, I was wondering why we didn't have any of the 10 clerks come before Donaldson here, because that was the only way that we would have the opportunity to listen and try to turn it around.
How many on the board are bilingual?
Well, this is from my understanding, it was, it was more like a forced retirement procedure, the way they were dismissed, they went around certain hires, because I have an actual hiring list. I have where who's next on the list, okay, to be hired and/or recalled. And if you look at, you had someone who was ripped way back in 1987, opposed to someone who just hired six years ago and who was not bilingual. It was wrong. And I have this information because I've monitored the clerks for over 29 years, so I know where we are. So if anybody would have that discussion, we can. They should be.
If that's what Donaldson here was for, that's why I kept wondering why we didn't see them. So at this point.
Well, many of them, unfortunately, because they didn't want to be bothered and they were forced to retire, but there's other actions that will take place because I still have communication with these young ladies. Unfortunately, unfortunately, it does have to take place, and it should not have been. It saves, you know, all the taxpayer money. It's wrong.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if Officer White is still here. He, he commented about the recall list. So the recall, the recall list we have to create in the event that we need an additional full-time security officer. So let's say somebody leaves the district, retires, resigns, we then utilize the recall list to pull the next person into a full-time position. So that's why it exists. And it just so happens that we didn't have any retirements or resignations, we didn't utilize the recall list. We also have sub-officers, and he commented on the sub-officers, and the sub-officers are there to help with daily callouts. So if a security officer at School A calls out sick, then we need a sub-officer to help out there. He invited, he invited me to go visit Woodrow Wilson. He sees me there all the time. He mentioned that, more than happy to go visit and spend a full day with him as he, as he encouraged me to do so. Mr. Barfield, CTE at Camelot, those students absolutely have access to the CTE courses. And so if there is an instance where you don't believe that was the case, please notify us of that, but they, those students do have access to the CTE courses there.
I was just asking for an update because I know that at the time, the person negotiating with Camelot was then in work on that process.
I got you.
So I was just wanting to know, want to update, because tomorrow, Thursday's back in two days, so I will get more information on this.
Okay, sounds good. Appreciate it. And just to close out here, Mr. Davis, you asked a question around whether, hold on, I'm going down the list, Ms. Trent. I'm going, I'm going down the list, and then I'll get, get to your last question. Mr. Davis commented about the central office move, we're going to the Washington School. He referenced some rumor about my office going to Rutgers. I'm not going to move, I'm not going to Rutgers. I don't know where that came from, so. And then Camden High School going into parochial schools. Just as a reminder, we agreed that Camden High, and this was an agreement made with the school community, that Camden High would remain in Parkside. And so there are very few buildings in the Parkside community. We would just move the kids to the other side of town. We didn't feel that was in the best interest of the staff and the school community to move them to, say, a parochial school in Kramer Hill or East Camden or what may have you. Ms. Trent, let's take this last question, then we're going to close out. I'll stick around if you have any other questions.
Yeah, I was asking in Brim, I spent the summer, most of my time at the high building itself. And with that, me being there, I was the only one in the building that spoke Spanish. The only one. So it was me who helped the parent community to be registered. It was me who did all that to help the FOC and the clerk and all that. Not even the ladies in the Camden High building itself, that section, none of them spoke Spanish.
We appreciate it, you did support the school.
It's not appreciation, I'm saying we need to get somebody in there to help those parents.
No, we need parents who are first.
I'm going to open it up to our board members if they'd like to say.
Those don't know how to speak the language.
Woodrow Wilson. Who's at Woodrow's? Does it teach the new prisoners that don't know English? English. We shouldn't be a college in our schools that English-speaking kind of country. Teach them English.
I did. I had one.
Because you referenced, because you referenced something, you said that, how come the, how come the clerks didn't do what's supposed to be that adoption here? As far as I know, that's something I'm not aware of, people get adoption based on the forums, or I don't know this. The reason why some of our clerks back there didn't have a chance to actually defend their position.
That's accurate.
So, the clerks were asked for a venue for clerks to actually vote for themselves, that venue doesn't exist. Also.
Well, there's a grievance, but in terms of the board, there's not a grievance.
But also, and this one thing I haven't noticed that the superintendent does, is that certain things that issues that he should be taking on head on, he passes off. So, for instance, Ms. McCombs, I have so much respect for you and your consciousness and your education and your ability to do your job, and I don't want that to be second guess, like anybody else saying this very, very clearly. In reference to the law, the library media specialist, for one, it says, in under, I underlined it, I said it, in every school, not one person, and then we'll get some folks inside the library somewhere sometime, no. The law says at every school, certain things have to be adhered to specifically to that. Now, the law is either cut your eye, either you follow the law or you're breaking. You don't manipulate it. It's the law, man, or you're breaking. So I've been putting that stuff out there, not for the superintendent to pass it off to Ms. McCombs or to anyone else, because overall, you're the captain of the ship. So everything, good or bad, falls on you. So, again, not up to your interpretation, the law is what it is. Follow it. Otherwise, you're breaking. So, in reference to the clerks, they didn't have a chance to actually do that. And it's absolutely discriminatory to want to be treated as targeted and other torts.
And not only that, I still have a concern where, where Ms. Trent is saying that she and her son was in a school painting. We have a facility department. So there's, so those are things that we're going to have to, we will look into, how things are being done. Okay. Okay. So I will, I, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
At this time, I call for a motion to adjourn. Who seconds? I'd like to call for a roll call. Ms. Teresa Atwood, Ms. Karen Blackshear, I mean, excuse me, Catherine Blackshear, Mr. Jose Brito Bueno, Ms. Dorothy Burley, Ms. Taisha Milner.
Yes.
Mr. Wassim Mohammed.
Yes.
Mrs. Felicia Reyes Morton, and Mrs. Martha Wilson. At this time, the meeting is adjourned.